Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region. This is the ninth video in a series with Natalie Manton and myself regarding the 2023 Colorado property tax situation. In the eighth part, we looked at the Colorado General Assembly website as a resource for information on ballot measures. In this video, Natalie will be providing a playbook for liberty activists who want to reduce property taxes in their local community. Well, Natalie, how are you today?
I am cheeky and ready to go.
Well, good to hear. I'm very excited on this one specifically to learn some actionable information on reducing property taxes and different paths that we can take because sometimes it can be a little depressing to see what the government's been doing to us, doing to our wallets, seeing the cost of goods rising and to know that we actually have options that are possible that we can do, you know, things we can actually do to help improve our communities. So very excited to hear what you have to say.
Yes, and for the overarching picture, we've kind of been building to this point. We've talked about Proposition HH7, which is a horrible, horrible measure on this November's ballot. Want to vote no on Prop HH? That is meant to, somebody used a great phrase today. I told them I'm stealing it. It's like political pole dancing is what Proposition HH is. And like think of it like in the worst way possible pole dancing. Okay. All right. So we've got to defeat that measure, but then we need local solution to this property tax issue. We've talked about the rising valuations, which normally is great, except the government profits off of you each and every year as a property owner or as a renter, either way, because of these exploding values. The governments have a choice and they've tried to back us into a corner while there are processes, tools, techniques that we can use as local activists to counter back. That's what this video is about. So important to note right from the beginning, we're talking about so many different local little governments that there can be little differences in the process for each one. So it's different for maybe a city versus a school district. Going to try to lay that out as best as possible and not confuse people. But I think some of that's going to occur. It's just pretty intense kind of thing. But with these different examples that I'm going to give, it will tie a little bit into a Lakewood option because we're going to go into some specifics, but let's start first of all. Number one, if you as a voter are in an area where you still have the taxpayers' bill of rights protections or the 5.5 annual mill levy cap, which we talked about in a previous episode, you don't maybe necessarily have to worry about some of these alternatives. Although you also always want to be electing people who are going to be protecting your taxpayers' bill of rights and your pocketbook. So if you still have one of those protections in place, you really have government revenue caps, taxpayer protections in place already, and that includes property taxes. But let's say you're in one of the areas where voters are taxpayer's bill of rights protections, taper protections. Then we want to start using some of the steps that we're going to follow here in these slides. So first, it's a good reminder, what are the powers of a Colorado local elected representative? That ties into where you and I, Brandon, we've talked about, even though the state can control that assessment rate, they're not the ones who set the mill levy. We don't pay state property taxes. This is really a local discussion. So what can local Colorado local elected representatives do? And I'm talking about city councilors, county commissioners, school board directors, special district directors. That might be a park and recs district, something like that. There's a long list of those. You and I went through how to look them up at DOLA, Department of Local Affairs. These local elected representatives can reduce property tax mill levies without requiring a vote. That's really important to remember. And those local elected officials actually by law need to do that in the fall of each year. So we have that period of time coming right up here pretty soon. And these local elected officials as a note can also reestablish government revenue caps. That's taking a step beyond property taxes. Depending on the government, a majority of the revenue might be property tax revenue. Maybe it's a split where half or third is property taxes, but keeping that trim moderate reasonable mechanism on top of local government is very, very useful. It provides for the sustainability of a community because if government's going too fast, then the population can support. You want those caps. So that just brings us back to we're in this discussion about Prop HH. And so we've just illustrated, they can reduce the mill levy without going to the voters. They can establish government revenue caps without having to go to the voters. So note, only tax increases require that public vote. And that's a good reminder. That's why Prop HH is on the ballot. It's not about reducing the property taxes. The state could have done that with the assessment change. They only want to take our taper refunds. That's why it's on the ballot. So again, let's go back to property taxes. That's a local issue. So an option that we've talked about as a possibility for the activists is to restore or create government revenue caps. What are the ways to do that? There's different routes that you can take. You can also be taking a couple of these routes or all of them. But electing majority of example given city councilors in this upcoming election, who will as a platform plank and then follow through with it, will cap property tax collections and set that mill levy to the December 15th date where they have to file it with a county and say, we as a city, we're setting this mill levy rate, knowing we're going to collect about this much from the citizens. Because by then they've got the property valuations, they know what that dollar amount is. We're going to go into a little bit more on that in another slide. But another option is pushing those local candidates right from the get-go. So local, get the phone number and email from either like a city clerk or the school board administrator. Contact those candidates and ask them where they stand on property taxes. We know that we have a big jump coming up. And finally, if you have this, you get a hold of the candidates and you find out all they really want is bigger government, more control, more rules, more regulations, more bureaucracy, more public administrators, et cetera, et cetera, then you can run for the office yourself. Somebody can. How do you get on the ballot? Because people may have no idea. It's actually pretty easy. So 21 years or older is generally the rule. There may be some anomaly out there. So double check with a clerk. There may be some municipalities where I couldn't verify real quick, but 18 or older could run for office. Citizen of the United States, of course, registered voter in the district. It's important to double check that's correct or that they are and be a resident of the district for 12 months. And then that part after getting those qualifications down is pretty easy. It's going out, getting 25 eligible voter signatures. Rule of thumb is that you want to be getting about 30%, 50% more than you are going to absolutely need. So what you're looking there is really going to get a minimum of 50 signatures from neighbors, and that's not hard to do. Just one note after, when you go to get that petition, do get it through the government website. Don't just go grab a notepad out of your office and go get signatures. Follow the procedures and then get it notarized afterwards. And a lot of this information is posted right on the jurisdictions website because the petition period just opened up. As I noted here in this slide, the signatures actually today and tomorrow are the first days candidates could go out and petition. So if somebody's interested, they're not behind at all in maybe a little bit. Could have started at least be thinking about this a little earlier, but then those signatures need to be turned in by August 28. So it's this period right now we're going through. You get on the ballot. But let's say you don't want to, somebody doesn't want to run for office. They can't find any candidates or electeds who actually want to put good old reasonable protections in place for taxpayers. Well, there's a process called initiative and referendum, and that's referred to or also referred to as direct ballot access. So what some, a organization of activists within the local community could do is go out through a process, get eligible voter's signatures and force the issue to a ballot. There's timing things to consider there. The number one thing is I use this rule of thumb. Line up your volunteers before, as many as possible, before you file the initiative and referendum with the agency. Because once you start that clock, it continues to run and you have a limited amount of time to do it. So I gave an example here for Lakewood, because I'll use this as an example further on. Third or fourth largest city in Colorado, and the signatures are actually pretty reasonable. If you have a hot topic like property taxes, you'd need about 7,500 signatures in this jurisdiction. And yet again, a 30% cushion for ineligible signers. People may be unincorporated and they've got a mailing address for Lakewood, but they just don't think about it. I don't actually get to initiate or vote on a Lakewood measure. Things like that occur. People don't change your address. That 30% cushion is a good piece to have, good number to have. Lining up the volunteers to do an initiative. Overall, you're going to get about six months. Some local jurisdictions, home rural municipalities have made it even more restrictive on petition efforts. That's a terrible, terrible thing to do to citizens, but a lot of them will be a six month window. That really leaves you though four months to get signatures, but it's really doable. If you again, if somebody's got a very subject that really motivates people and trust me, when homeowners and renters are looking at the situation where property taxes going up 1,000 or more, and it could be thousands actually more for a one in January 2024. This is a subject that may motivate people to go out and circulate through the neighborhood, knock on doors, go in front of a library, go in front of a grocery store. And I figured it out for Lakewood needing roughly, let's say 10,000 signatures with a cushion. If you got 100 volunteers, 150 signers each, you're at 15,000 right there. So it is doable. Certainly been done many times. It's not impossible. You don't actually have to have really deep pockets. If you have a, you can print petitions on your own, staple them together. There's lots of ways to make it happen. I've been involved with it personally to know and speak to that to a fact. I would suggest considering, I'm not a lawyer, by the way, lawyers, I'm not a lawyer. And Brandon, you're not a lawyer, right? Nope. Okay. That if somebody's looking at doing this, they should sit, consider what type of amendment they're making. You could change city code. You could amend by one action a mill levy. But you could also make government revenue caps as part of a city charter, which is like a constitution. That's a really important consideration because if you're going to go to that effort to put growth limits or government caps in place, that if you do it just in city code, that could be changed by elected representatives in the future. So if you want to make it a citizen initiative, it's something to consider. Looking at the timeline, because we've talked about a couple of different things. We've talked about capping the mill levy. We've talked about a citizen initiative with a six month window. So I wanted to give a little bit of idea on this timeline. Number one, remember elected officials on their agenda, on their calendar anyway, in October and November will be setting the mill levies. So reaching out to them now, especially the current incumbents and, and you know, go to public comments, speak about it. Bring it, make it a subject because let me tell you what, these governments, they are not discussing a voluntary limit of their, the government revenue. That is not the agenda item they've got. So you want to try to accomplish this discussion in October and November with hoping to accomplish that task of lowering the mill levy by December 1. Because it needs to be set and voted on and sent on to the county assessor's office, a county. Because they're the ones that are going to actually put that property tax bill together that goes out towards the beginning of January. So you've got that deadline, but it looks, we're a little bit of a time crunch, right? We're all under pressure because of what we got going on with Prop HH baloney, terrible bill, other things going on. You've got this initiative process as this alternative that we talked about. There's some other things. Here's the main thing to come away with. The local governments collect the property tax. That is where your power lies. And this is a hot enough topic that people will be motivated. It's not like some obscure thing that is not timely and is not present in a lot of people's mind and stressing a lot of people frankly out. So when you go to do a property tax relief initiative, there's a couple things that you are going to take up. It gets just a little bit wonky, but in our previous videos, we covered this stuff. We covered the mill levy rate. So this is a little bit of like a how to, a guide on these steps. And hopefully I lined it up reasonably well here to digest it. Can always rewind and go back. The mill levy rate, what is that? So how do you find that? Well, if you've got a property tax, somebody has a property tax statement, they can find that online. Most, if not, say most counties, I don't know who wouldn't maybe, but smaller rural counties, it could be true. Some of them are quite small. A lot of governments are going to just have that online at the county's property record lookup system. You can always call the county, ask for the assessor's office, treasurer's office. Either way, they're going to be able to help you there. What is the mill levy for a jurisdiction? Also as a backup, I included the link for DOLA. Hopefully that hyperlink works well. If not, a quick search at DOLA brings up the area of local government and then the taxation issue. But you want to know that number. The next is just finding out what is the current property tax collections. Most people think of governments and budgets, but one of the most useful documents is the annual comprehensive financial report. Old days, just so nobody's confused, that used to be comprehensive annual financial report, which was CAFER. Easy to say. Now let's ASFR. I don't know why. So governments love to change acronyms. There's somebody over there who has a job title, just probably at how to change the acronym so we confuse everybody out there. I think it really is a job. Anyway, so you want to go to the ASFR and as I call it, it's the go-to document. But the comprehensive financial report is an audited document and don't put too much weight into the word audited, by the way. It's usually available in late spring or summer. And then it is, it's gone through this auditor and all they do, by the way, all the way, what the auditor does is to make sure that the math is coming out correct and things are properly kind of lined up and a portion. It doesn't at all audit whether the government is spending your government, your money wisely. It is not like the Denver auditor, some people think about. This whole notion where governments talk about being audited, really ask them twice, what does that mean? Are you asking, is it appropriate for employees to go using the credit card to go out and do this and that? No, they don't look into that. That's why you need an internal auditor, but I'm off track now. So it doesn't provide the line by line items like a check register would, but it will give those bulk general categories and main purpose here is you're trying to look up. What is the property tax? I think I had on the previous slide, Ctrl F in most documents, bring up the search function, look up, type in property tax, and you should be able to dribble down right away through what might be a 200-page document pretty quickly to find out those things you need. In this case, this is the recently reduced, released comprehensive report for city of Lakewood. What we're trying to figure out here by knowing these numbers is what is been the recent jumps? Because this is not the first year where the properties have increased. So what is that recent revenue? What dollar amount do you have to work with? How can you cap it? In Lakewood's case, we've got it increasing by just under 10%. That doesn't even count for this 36.5% increase that we will be seeing here shortly. This slide will really reference the timeline when the assessor is sending the total valuation of all of the properties. So if you think back in May, property owners get this notice from the assessor. It says your property values jumped this much. You have the June 1st to protest that. Then there's a second period of that protest. Basically by August 15, the assessor knows pretty close figure on what's going to be the taxable value of all of the properties in a jurisdiction. They're required by this law 395121 to report that to the local government. So your government is getting a dollar figure. Here's all these taxable properties we've got. By the way, what theft, theft, you haven't even sold your property and you're paying more taxes for what might be a price they think you can sell it for. So they're basing their next year's budget, the local government, what that taxable value is times a mill levy to get to it. So that's the piece that's going to tell somebody, oh, I don't think my city should be profiting 40% nearly off of this property valuation predicament that we're in. We should be tapping, capping it. So using these calculations, what's the total value? You know, now what's your mill levy? You can say maybe in one way or other, okay, city counselor, we want to say, we want a three and a half percent cap on the property taxes. They're going to take an additional. Let the taxpayers keep the remainder in their pocket, which benefits the community. Maybe you want to say in an initiative or to a prospective candidate or a city counselor, we want to just say the city's going to take in no more than this amount of millions, which maybe there'd be pros and cons to both ways. You could drill down on what is that going to look like. So we've noted before, Colorado counties are projecting these market values that are getting increased by 30 to 50% on average. Some as much as 80%, especially in the rural resort areas. But those valuations, as I just showed you in the last slide, aren't really nailed down to August 25. Use that valuation multiplied by the mill levy and that local government can estimate the revenue they'll get in the next year. Let's see here, slide Jefferson County from the assessor themselves, knowing in April of this year, the value here in Jeffco, 36.5%. The slides that are out there, the news clips, I mean, it was really as many called, even the assessors themselves, shocking valuations. And that's why we're, we're having these discussions. So again, this presentation kind of uses Lakewood as an example, but there's other jurisdictions where you can get down to these specifics. So I'm drawing out these assumptions. I just covered how you get to those. So we've got a 36% increase. I even rounded it down there to be conservative instead of 36.5, which the assessor just said to 36%. Trying to be fair here, right? We know that the confirmed SaaS value in Lakewood, based off of this link I'm providing here at the bottom, which is Colorado government site that we knew in 2022, we were at SaaS value of 2.4 billion in Lakewood. So that's that basis that you're using for this calculation. So in that, let me slip back one more. If you go for folks who are watching this, go to that annual reports, you'll be able to look it up by county. They've got a huge massive sheet. It goes by county. Here's all the assessed property value for the county. Here's for this municipality. It's packed full of information. So in Lakewood's example, we've got saying, we are basing it off of the old value. Okay. So I'm, I'm not even including that, you know, the prior set value that we know for sure. Times this 36% increase that we project will know for sure August 25. And that means that we've got a $3.3 billion assessed total value for 2023, more than a billion dollar jump. We've got the 3.3 billion there, we're assuming, times the city of Lakewood's mill levy. Take that out, you take 15.5 million dollars out of property owners and also essentially renters or tenants, commercial businesses, consumers, because they get passed on the taxes from the grocery store, right? Eggs become more expensive, milk goes up, all of a sudden 50 bucks for your little cart or bag of groceries. Now you're at, you know, 60 bucks, more and more out of your pocket, every direction you go. And that means what were taxes of 12.9 million from Lakewood property owners and all the others I mentioned, it's jumping up to 15.5. That's quite a jump. That's two and a half million dollars more going out of taxpayers' pockets into city government alone. We didn't even cover there all the other little jurisdictions, political subdivisions that are on a property tax. That means government's going to be profiting really big and it's not state of Colorado. They're going to take our taper refunds in their little scheme that they've got going with property to make a mechanism work. When we're trying to point out here, thankfully for your program, Free State Colorado, that a lot of this is a local control, a local citizen control issue. And this all hits our wallets. You the, you know, you're the person watching this is hitting your wallet. We already know we're facing higher housing costs. You know, property landlords are passing these costs on to tenants, which makes sense. That's right. Residential, the commercial, consumers face it. As noted here, something to consider, you know, as if high inflation in the slide is shown isn't enough. Those retailers and vendors pass it on these higher cost to consumers. Well, the end of the day, the city collects more sales tax when the cost of goods goes up. So what incentive does the city or the local government have to lower taxes? Not on the property tax issue, I mean. So at the end of the day, it's a good reminder that when you look at the organizational chart of any of these cities or a county or special district. And some of them I found that didn't have it quite liked. I had to hunt up ones that are properly laid out that we, the people are at the top of the organizational chart. And I, I think the way to express this best, I, you know, I'm not usually one for sayings and stuff, but I wanted to add one in. And it's by Alice Walker. She's an author wrote Color Purple. Many people might be familiar with that movie. The most common way people give up their power is by thinking they don't have any. You can be city hall. You can actually become an elected member at city hall. You can run a citizen initiative to reenact Tabor, the taxpayers' bill of rights at a local level. You can cap property taxes. You can pressure, frankly, here's one I didn't include in the earlier screens. There's actually one other alternative. I should have noted it in here. Potentially you could ask for recall city councilors if they don't do what you want. Because when it comes to hundreds and thousands of dollars more out of our pocket about this property tax issue, this is pretty darn important. And that may be a failure to, in their duty, if they do not lower our taxes. And as far as I know, a recall is justified when you do not do your duty. So I hope that gave some ideas to people and they feel empowered, maybe motivated to take one of these steps or maybe more of them.
Yes, Natalie. Well, I mean, that's very powerful and urgent information for sure. Here we are in August of 2023. As you said, the top clock is ticking. The time to get involved is now. And it's very important for people to realize they do have the power to speak up, stand up and get engaged, get organized in your local community to push for lower property taxes here in 2023. And of course, keep planning for the future. I mean, this is great information and I hope people act on it.
I hope so too. And if they've got any questions, feel free to ask. They can do that, of course, in the comment section. Please subscribe to the channel because I think we've got some more topics to cover coming up. And it's been a real joy to be able to share this information. I hope people feel empowered. That's really what it's about.
Yes. Well, thank you so much, Natalie, for putting this presentation together.
It's not just a slogan on a TV, power to the people. We got it.
Definitely. We have the power. We have the capability to do it. And as you said, more people are motivated than ever to stand up and to get involved. And they see those record high bills when they wonder how they're going to cover their costs, you know, for back to schools coming up, getting their kids to school and all the extra costs that are associated. You know, for back to schools coming up, getting their kids to school and all the extra costs that are associated with that. You know, this is a real issue that affects people on the daily life. So get involved and get involved in your local politics. It's where you have the biggest impact.
Yes. And as a little bit of a teaser for an upcoming episode, because I've been doing a lot of research on this. Schools are somewhat of a different animal. It noted in asterix earlier in one of the slides. We're going to need to dedicate one of these upcoming shows just to school because the common rumor is that you can't moderate school taxes, but the fact is actually looks like you can. And the responses I've gotten from school districts has been very interesting. I think proving the point, but instead of going into that tonight, we're going to do that on an upcoming one.
Awesome. Looking forward to it. And yeah, get engaged people. Uh, leave a comment either on YouTube or on the website. Uh, there's always a spot to leave a reply on each of these posts. And I'll definitely take a look at that. You can also contact me directly through the website and I can get those questions over to Natalie. Maybe we should do a Q and A at some point. That'd be kind of fun.
That would be fun.
So perfect. Well, thank you so much, Natalie. Really appreciate all your passion and your energy, your hard work at making all of this happen and can't wait for the next one.
I am thrilled to be on your great and wonderful show, Brandon. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.